Though thunderstorms may produce small hail, the highs tomorrow mainly in the 50s to around 60. It's 7 o'clock. Have a great day.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, May 15th, and this is a Moscow City Council meeting. If you would all please rise with me, I will lead us in a pledge.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. The next thing on our agenda is the, before we get into it, is just an announcement, we will not have a executive session this evening. So, once again, there will be no executive session at the end of our meeting tonight. With that, I'm going to go into National Police Week. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy signed a proclamation that was designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. And whereas since 1971, there have been 22,863 known line-of-duty deaths in America. And whereas since 1995, Idaho peace officers have conducted a memorial ceremony in Meridian, Idaho to honor those who gave the ultimate sacrifice. Whereas 71 police officers in the state of Idaho have lost their lives in the line of duty. And whereas, May the 19th, 2017, marks the 10th anniversary of the line-of-duty death of Moscow Police Officer Lee Newbill. And whereas, our community honors and thanks the men and women of the Moscow Police Department for their dedicated service. Now therefore, I, Bill Lambert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim May 15th through May 21st as National Police Week. And the city of Moscow, and I urge all citizens to reflect upon the sacrifices and services made by our police personnel to preserve and promote the safety to the community members of the city of Moscow. And with that, I see Chief Farai out there and some other officers and command officers. And I'd like to have a little presentation for them and a picture.
Do you know what that means?
My full caps. Paul was one old family. Yeah, let's get it to your upside down. There we go. Here we go.
People would get behind Paul. You can bomb that. Get behind Paul where they can't see me.
Come fly in the management. They're usually good. Okay, you doing all right?
Sweet.
Thank you. Bravo.
Mayor, we would, the police department appreciates all your support of you and the council. So, we'd like to present you all with our commemorative Lee Newbill coin that we did in his honor. So, thank you for all the support that you've given us.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you, Chief. So much. Wow. Thank you, Chief. It is. That was not a good day. It doesn't, in some respects, it seems like a lifetime ago. But 2007, I was council president at that time when we lost our officer. And I get emotional about it every time I think about it or even can talk about it because, as a council president, I think that was the roughest day or time as a counselor that I ever had. Because issues and situations we can fix, but when it comes to something like that, it's a powerful thing. So, I really respect what our police officers, men and women, do out there. So, as does this council. So, thank you all for the work that you do. Okay, with that, I will go on to the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Art and a second by Catherine to approve the consent agenda. I'll start to roll. John?
Aye.
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 And aye.
Okay, we will move on to the item number two, which is Staff Recognition Report. Gary Reeder, sure you have the podium?
Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I'd like to turn this time over to Tyler Palmer, who has a couple of certificates to present to two members of our Streets Department, A.J. Dahlberg and Dana Rand. So...
Mayor, council, I'm happy to be back here. These are some of the funner things that we get to do at council meetings. As Gary mentioned, we have the advancement of two members of our Streets Department. Within our advancement structure, there are three levels in the Streets Department. We have an apprentice level, adjournment level, and a senior level. And so, this is, within the career advancement, this is a pretty big deal because today we have two members of our Streets Department advancing to the senior level in our Maintenance Department. And it's really, it takes years and years of experience, and there are a lot of courses that are required in order to advance this level. There's a lot of knowledge that is necessary just to be a competent and helpful employee in the Streets Department. And one of the things that I like to think about is how many decisions these employees make every day that can save the city so much more money than they're getting paid if we've got good, motivated, invested, well-trained employees. And both of these gentlemen very much are just that. They're really a tribute to our department. You know, just some of the certifications that are required, they take several years to gain. I mean, on top of being a proficient equipment operator, and that means all the equipment that we have. And if you think about it, I mean, the Streets Department has the largest individual fleet for any department in the whole city. These guys do a huge variety of things. They have to be jacks-of-all-trade. You know, they're doing everything from running a street sweeper to a snow plow, to helping clean out lines, to a backhoe, to an excavator, to a loader, to... It's just constant. And the small decisions that they make can make such a huge difference. If these, both of these gentlemen have served as shift leads on our plow operation. Just making the right decision about what material to use not only can save people from having accidents and injuries, help kids get to school on time, but it also can save thousands of dollars when they understand what they're doing about their job and know what application to use and what application to have everybody, all of the other employees using. So, all of those micro decisions just have such a cascading effect throughout the organization. And we really need people like A.J. and Dana to help these things run. So, A.J.'s been with our department for five years now, A.J., and we've really enjoyed having him. He's a detail-oriented person. He's a hard worker. He's led our patching crew. He's been a shift lead on our plowing crews. And just, he's done an excellent job. So, first certificate will be for A.J. Would you want to say A.J.?
Welcome. There you want to go. Yes. Why don't you do the presentation?
Let's get out here, John. A.J., come on over here.
Perfect.
Come on, I'm going to... Hey, we want to make sure the guy in the red shirt here gets the...
Sometime before the end, I want to hear Gary say...
No, no, no.
Any more?
I can use my vocal test.
Thank you.
You don't have to. We'll let it go tonight.
One thing I'll say, these guys, when they get these awards and stuff, they work very, very hard for them, and they don't do any of the talking, they just do the work. And that's the big deal. And I'm very, very proud of that, as is Counselor A.J. staff that works hard to get certificates and work their way through things, that's So, you don't need to speak, but you're welcome to if you want to. above and beyond the call of duty, that's what makes our team professional in the city So, thank you.
All right, and so, yeah, our next recipient is Dana Rand. Dana has been with our department, he's been with Streets Department since 2013.
here. And that goes through all the ranks. And as the mayor, I'm very, very proud of that, as are all these counselors.
He came to us with a lot of experience. He worked at the University of Idaho in their maintenance section and actually worked
So, both you guys, good going.
for our Water Department for a brief period before transferring over to the Streets Department.
Thank you very much for all the efforts and the work that you do.
Dana's been just a great tribute to the department.
And like I said earlier with A.J. and Dana, these guys just do the work.
He really has. A wonderful person who's very, very committed to making Moscow the kind of community we
They don't talk, they just get it done.
all want to live in.
And that's very much appreciated by all of us.
So, Dana.
All right. Here's a...
Your Honor, I think Dwight has one more presentation to make.
How would we go that far?
Okay. Dwight? Where are you, Dwight?
Still coming on? Is it too early, Dwight?
He looks surprised.
Oh, sorry. I was out of turn.
Okay. Dwight, go ahead and sit down. We'll call on you in a little... He's here all night because he's got the last three things on the agenda, so he's not getting away from us, so... Okay, the next thing on the agenda is mayoral appointments, and I have one appointment that I would like to present to the council, and that is Colette De Phelps, Farmers Market Commission, expiration 12/31/2017. I entertain a motion to approve Colette.
I mean, we accept Colette De Phelps on the Farmers Market Commission.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Catherine and a second by Jim to approve Colette. I'll start with the rule with Walter.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Colette, are you here somewhere in the crowd? We've got a lot of folks here. Okay, I was going to let her get a chance to get up and talk. And so, we will move on to the next thing, which is item number four. Public comment. And I have a response for everybody out there. Good evening, everybody. During the public comment period at the Moscow City Council meeting on May 1st, 2017, a comment was received regarding the response of the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department to an accident that occurred on Sand Road near the Idaho-Washington border, just to the south of Moscow. Troy Zacharison, the owner of PAC EMS, a local private ambulance company, heard the emergency dispatch call and talked about his disappointment and dismay that although the incident occurred within a mile of his company, he was unable to respond. He further commented that the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department needed additional resources than they could provide and called for mutual aid from the Pullman Fire Department ambulance rather than seek assistance from Mr. Zacharison. These comments disturbed me, and I looked further into this matter and the action of the men and women on our Moscow Volunteer Fire Department. I ask Fire Chief Brian Nekerson to take a few moments to brief the council and the public this evening regarding this incident. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The accident that occurred on Sand Road on April 30th, 2017, involved three individuals in a vehicle that left the roadway and struck a large tree. The four-foot tree entrapped persons in a vehicle, which created challenges for extrication as crews worked to stabilize the tree and the vehicle so as not to create further injury to the patients. Two passengers were trapped in the vehicle. The third was able to get out of the vehicle. The accident occurred approximately three miles from Moscow Fire Station 1. It took crews approximately 90 minutes to extricate the passengers from the vehicle. Responding units and times, the first command officer arrived in seven minutes. The first ambulance arrived in eight minutes. The first medic and rescue company arrived in nine minutes. The second ambulance arrived in 10 minutes. The second rescue arrived in 11 minutes. The third ambulance arrived in 12 minutes. An engine arrived in 22 minutes, and District 12 in Pullman arrived in 24 minutes, and a second Moscow engine arrived in 27 minutes. Responding personnel and equipment, 22 Moscow personnel responded. One medic unit, three Moscow ambulance company ambulances, two paramedics, two Moscow rescue units, two Moscow engines, one command vehicle. Approximately 10, 12, District 12 and Pullman personnel responded with various response vehicles, including one Pullman ambulance, which had two paramedics, as well as one off-duty paramedic that lived right near the incident, along with two life-flight helicopters. In reviewing the incident and considering both response times and actions, I am confident that the response was very well-staffed and handled with the utmost professionalism and care. Given the overall response, there was no need for additional responders. Given the overall response, additional responders would not have lessened the amount of time to extricate individuals from the vehicle and would not have reduced transport time. All rescue functions were managed professionally and successfully, specifically the extrication work managed by the Moscow Rescue Company. Given the location of the incident, several factors came into play. Last fall, discussions were held for mutual aid response, given the accessibility challenges associated with some addresses, including several along Sand Road. As such, when dispatch asked the commanding officer if a mutual aid from District 12 was required, he responded affirmatively. This approach has been discussed between agencies, given the proximity of several addresses along Idaho and Washington border to proactively meet those accessibility challenges and provide quick response times. Further, when District 12 is dispatched to an incident, depending on the information and severity of the incident, typically Pullman Fire is also dispatched to assist as a paramedic service for District 12. With more than 30 people on scene, the right personnel and the right equipment available in under 10 minutes, I am proud of the work of the city of Moscow and our partners, the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, District 12, and the city of Pullman in managing this event and providing caring and professional service to all involved in that evening.
Thank you, Chief.
Mayor.
I wanted to have the chief talk about the response from our volunteers, as Mr. Zacharison's comments last week could have undermined the public's confidence in the state of emergency medical response in our city. Upon review, it is clear that the response of the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department was swift, decisive, professional, and more than adequate of this incident. Within the past month, we have seen the same scenario in emergency response to test rocket incident that occurred on April 13th on the University of Idaho campus, where within minutes, four ambulances of the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department administered medical help to four victims of an accidental explosion, with more than sufficient resources to meet the emergency. I know I speak for the city council in reaching out to the Moscow Volunteer Fire Department and our emergency responders and thanking them for their service above and beyond expectations. The city of Moscow is committed to supporting our volunteers and to providing effective and caring emergency services to our community. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, I'm very, very proud of the job that you did. Thank you again, Chief. With that, I'll open up the public comment period for folks that want to talk to us. As long as it's something that is not on tonight's agenda, or something that has already been discussed, or something that is in front of the Board of Adjustment or the Planning and Zoning, please state your name and address, and you've got three minutes.
Victoria Silver, 121 North Lilly, Moscow. So, taking a different bent here, I wanted to say we have a great downtown restroom. And I really like the look of it. I like the brick that blends in with the historic and the black with a different texture that blends into the urban look. It marries the historic downtown with what's developing, like with the Gritman Building. It, I was surprised that the shed roof looks so good. I didn't really know that that would make a big difference, but I think it does. And the inside looks like it belongs in a restaurant. It's really nice. So, we have an excellent university, and we have a number-one market, and we have prime agriculture and farmland, and we have a great community, and we have a great police force and fire department and emergency personnel. And now we have a downtown restroom that reflects quality, which is what we want and reflects us. So, I wanted to thank everybody, and it's been a lot of people. It's been three commissions. Sue Scott's been hanging in there. It's been Dwight, who did a lot of work. It's been a donor for $10,000, an anonymous donor. It's been the Moscow Urban Renewal Agency for $20,000. It's been all these people who've talked to you. And it took a team, and it took some team leadership, and I'm glad it's done, and it looks great. And we needed it.
Thank you, Victoria. Okay. With nobody else approaching, we will move on to item number five, which is the Tree City USA 2016 Flag Presentation by Dwight Curtis.
Now, Dwight.
Now.
Now you get it, Dwight.
Now.
Got to give this photo it's due here. Arbor Day. Okay, this will be nice and fast, but I thought it was important. And so, as you know, back on April 28th, we had Arbor Day, and the city received the Tree City USA and the Growth Award designations. And this is for 2016. Of our budget, just short of $65,000, or $2.59 per capita, was spent on something to do with trees. And we pruned 221 trees, removed 13, planted 29, gave away 500 seedlings to be planted, and our tree maintenance folks, 887 hours of time. We received $1,825 from the Eugene Thompson Memorial. And we also added nine programs to our recreational side of the house that is tree-related, and that all counted toward the Growth Award. So, very quickly, I just wanted to present this flag to the mayor. Councilman Bonza, I'm sorry, Councilman Bolland and Nels Peterson, you can see in the photo, they were at this. And it was a great day, another tree. This is by the Egan Youth Center, swamp white oak. And as you know, it's a little swampy out there, so it's, it fits. And so, anyway, Mayor, if I could get you to complete your flag.
In that particular day, I was out of town at a family event, and so Jim Bolland, the president, stood in for me that day. So, Jim's going to get the picture with me up here.
Sounds good.
Big flag.
Before you get it right, that...
You don't need to help.
Leave it to the mayor, you know, because we get the thing out. It's still upside down.
These guys have obviously never done laundry.
I was going to leave Jim alone. He'll get to the thing, sir.
Stretch it out.
You've got to stretch it out.
Okay. Maybe next time. Yeah.
Dwight, don't let them put it on the flagpole.
Regarding Off-Street Parking Requirements. Michael Ray, you will be leading us in this, sir. How are you this evening, Mike?
Doing well, Your Honor, Council.
Should we explain how public hearings work?
What's that?
Should we explain how public hearings work for those who don't show up often?
May I begin?
Go ahead and continue, Mike.
Thank you. So, before you tonight, we have a legislative amendment of Title IV, Chapter VI. This is regarding off-street parking requirements within our zoning code. This is a project the Planning and Zoning Commission has been working on over about the last year. And really, there's multiple intents of this amendment. Right now, our section's largely outdated, so we use multiple terminology to describe the same thing throughout the section. Those terms are used interchangeably, looking at providing greater flexibility. A lot of these things are conditional use permits, and we want to shift towards a more administrative approval, as well as restructuring some sections for ease of use, illustrations to convey certain requirements, and ensure greater consistency in how the requirements are administered. So, just a little bit of background where we've come up to this point, as with all larger code amendments, staff generally researches what other jurisdictions do. So, we had taken a look at about 10 other jurisdictions: Boise-Caldwell, Coeur d'Alene, Lewiston, Meridian, Missoula, Nampa, Pullman, Sandpoint, and Twin Falls, just to get an idea of other municipalities within the region and state. Staff had cleaned up some of the inconsistencies, and then the commission went through all the sections and made recommended changes. And then they decided to create a Parking Standards Advisory Committee, which met on December 21st of last year, January 21st of this year, and March 1st of this year as well. And they provided additional recommendations, and most of those changes, actually all the changes that they ended up recommending were incorporated into the draft ordinance before you tonight. So, I just wanted to take a minute and highlight those members of the committee. They had met over the lunch hour. Usually, those meetings lasted a little bit longer, and they dedicated quite a bit of their own time in order to provide recommendations. So, we had David Rock, U of I horticulturist, Richie Beebe, who's a local contractor in town, Scott Becker with Hodg and Associates, a civil engineer, Matt Decker owns Raindrop Sprinklers, he's a landscape contractor, Susan Wilson's a local attorney, and we had Victoria, who's just representing the Citizensry, as well as the Sustainable Environment Commission. And then we had Wendy and Greg, who are on Planning and Zoning Commission. So, just taking a look at the first change, change section, has to do when the parking requirements are required. So, it's our application of off-street parking requirement section. And these are the scenarios when the parking's required: new structure use, change in use, you have an expansion of use, alterations, maintenance. And the proposed amendments were really to amend the section to clarify current process and interpretation. So, we had an issue recently with the Board of Adjustment Interpretation. What we're really doing is just clarifying the current language to be more consistent with what our historical interpretation has been in the Community Development Department over the last 20 to 30 years. So, just clarifying that, as well as allowing an additional 10%, essentially a credit for a change of or expansion of use within that category. Surfacing requirements, we currently contain surfacing requirements for parking lots, and it's mainly just concrete and asphalt. And then there's a specific depth to those. And then we have an alternate surface of similar durability that's able to be approved. It doesn't specify who's able to approve that. We also have a five-year deferral of paving through a development agreement. Taking a look at the proposed changes within this section, looking at adding six months to get all parking lot improvements done through a temporary certificate of occupancy, as well as an additional six months for unforeseen circumstances. So, really up to a year in order to complete all parking lot improvements, not just paving. We'd also be clarifying that the city engineer would be approving the alternative surfacing. So, the city engineer would be the one with the expertise in order to review and determine whether or not it's of similar durability to concrete and asphalt. And then we'd be proposing to eliminate the five-year deferral of just the paving of the parking lot within this section. Curbing section, really curbing's intended to protect the asphalt edge, contain the landscape areas within parking lots, and then intended for containing and directing drainage, as well as vehicular movement and placement around the parking lot. So, right now, we just specify, and we have a little bit of antiquated language about a bumper rail, and then we have a specified height, four inches high, setback two feet from the property line. Rather general, what we would be proposing to do is just eliminate the bumper rail language. So, just the antiquated language and leaving it as it currently exists. the parking lot within this section. Curbing section, really curbing's intended to protect the asphalt edge, contain the landscape areas within parking lots, and then intended for containing and directing drainage, as well as vehicular movement and placement around the parking lot. So right now, we just specify, and we have a little bit of antiquated language about a bumper rail, and then we have a specified height, four inches high, setback two feet from the property line. Rather general, what we would be proposing to do is just eliminate the bumper rail language. So just the antiquated language, and leaving it as it currently exists. We don't specify what type of curb is required, we just have the height requirement, and we wanted to retain a little bit of flexibility for possibly some alternative proposals from developers. Off-site parking, so these are, right now, we currently allow off-street parking to be satisfied on the current lot, same lot, or the adjacent lot to the property. Through a conditional use permit, you're allowed to have off-site parking, and then we specify certain distances. The maximum that you can have those facilities away, so for multifamily, we limit that to 100 feet away. Hospitals, sanitariums, asylums, rooming and boarding houses and similar uses is specified at 300 feet, and then all other uses is 500 feet. So the changes within this section, we'd be looking to shift it instead of going through a conditional use permit and going through the Board of Adjustment, who wouldn't really be reviewing, you know, much of anything with this proposal. We'd be looking at shifting that to administrative approval with staff, as well as consolidating some of these categories. So, you know, that's outdated as far as the sanitariums, asylums. Those are uses that we don't even list within the zoning code right now. So we'd be shifting, number one, multifamily, to just say all residential uses other than single-family and two-family, specify 250 feet. The committee had looked at this and determined that 100 feet wasn't very far away. Your typical lot width in the core town's 50 to 60 feet, and so that would just mean it's one lot over. So they wanted to increase that to 250 feet for all those residential uses other than single-family and two-family. And then all other uses, so we'd be eliminating the hospitals and shifting that into all other uses, leave that at 500 feet. So we would still allow off-site for those uses. Up to 500 feet, you would just be going through administrative approval instead of the Board of Adjustment through a conditional use permit. The joint use of parking lots, so right now, depending upon whether or not you're a daytime or a nighttime use, daytime could be like offices, nighttime could be more bars, you're able to allow joint use of a parking lot, so in order to satisfy the off-street parking requirements. And so it allows for that overlap. And a conditional use permit is just like the off-site parking areas, conditional use permits required for joint use. We'd be looking at shifting that over to administrative approval instead of a conditional use permit. Right now, there's a 50% limitation, so 50% of the off-street parking required by daytime uses could be supplied by nighttime uses, and vice versa. We'd be looking at administrative approval instead of conditional use permit, and then increasing the 50% to 85%. So we still want to account for some overlap, because you could be in an office and stay past 5 o'clock, you could be at a bar and arrive to work 15 minutes early. So we still want to, you know, not go 100%, but, and still accommodate that overlap that could occur. Parking lot dimensional standards, so this is where we go through, you know, layout, whether or not you have perpendicular angled or parallel parking. We have different classification of parking spaces. You have standard stalls, compact stalls, and then you have accessible ADA stalls. Standard stalls, nine by 20, compact, seven and a half by 15. Right now, we have a 25% allowance for compact spaces within parking lots. The only change that the commission and committee recommended were to increase the compact allowance to 35%. And then the compromise with staff on this increase was to increase the compact width from 7.5, so seven and a half feet to eight feet. So as you well know, if you go and, you know, park in, even if you have a compact vehicle and park in a compact space, it's usually the door room that is the biggest issue in those spaces. And seven and a half is really tight. Even nine feet for a standard space is tight as well. So for that 35% compact allowance increase, we'd just be looking at moving seven and a half to eight on the width of the compact spaces. Tandem parking, right now, we've always allowed it for single-family, two-family dwellings. I think it was 2010, we inserted, actually 2014, I believe, it's more recent. Inserted specific requirements for multifamily. We had a developer request, looking at doing some tandem for multifamily development that was utilizing garages as part of their development. Right now, we allow it for enclosed garages only in multifamily. We require that it's for use of the occupant, so you can't rent it out for like a storage unit that's to somebody that doesn't live on-site. And the garage space is counted as a quarter of the space towards satisfying the off-street parking requirement. So we had a member of the committee that, actually a couple of members that had worked on a project, that incorporated these garage spaces in a tandem configuration for a multifamily development, and wanted to see the, that quarter of a space be increased and accounted more, because they ended up with quite a bit of parking on the development, not only in garages, but exterior as well. Staff's major, I think, concern with tandem parking in multifamily has always been visitor parking. So on those high-use weekends or days when you're having a party, or maybe it's Super Bowl Sunday, where all the visitors to park, if you store things in your garage, and then you park in front of your garage, and that satisfies your requirement. So what we had worked on was to count the garage space as a full space up from a quarter, and then to restrict the total number of tandem provided to no more than 50%. So only 50% would be allowed to be provided in a tandem configuration in a multifamily development. And that was more of a compromise to satisfy staff's concerns with the visitor parking, but allow those spaces to be counted as a full space within the garage. Specific Zone Exemption Section, not a whole lot of changes within this section. We just relocated the current central business exemption, which doesn't require off-street parking in the central business zone. We relocated the urban mixed commercial specific parking requirements, which are currently within Chapter Three, underneath the Zone Section. And then this is really the only addition, is inserting the university's Zone Exemption, saying that parking and transportation services pretty much handles the parking at the university, and the university is exempt from the city's off-street parking requirements, which really just recognizes the way it is today. The university, in order to be in the university's zone, it has to be property owned by the university, and the city doesn't regulate university development nor the parking. So we'd just be stating what, how it currently exists. Accessibility Section, we'd be mainly just inserting illustrations, looking at relocating some of the ADA language. Right now, we have a sentence at the very beginning, we'd just be consolidating that to this section, which discusses what we're appointing you to regarding ADA within parking lots. And then we'd be inserting these illustrations. So you have a van accessible space, a standard accessible space, and an accessible sign detail. And these are, a lot of questions we get asked in our department, is what we're required to put in an accessible space in, what does that look like? And so this is, you know, nice to be able to hand out to people and have in our code, so they know exactly what the requirements are, instead of just a verbal telling them what, what the dimensions are for the spaces. And then there's a certain number of ADA spaces required, depending upon the size of your parking lot. We'd just be inserting this table from the building code in there as well. And then looking at the off-street parking table, this is where you have parking requirements depending upon the use. And we're just changing a couple of things right now. In a month or two, we're going to be going before council with a use table ordinance, and as part of that whole, you know, taking a look at the uses within the zoning code and moving from a narrative to a table format, we're going to be reviewing, you know, a lot of the uses that currently aren't listed within the off-street parking schedule. So we'll be revising all of those, you know, inserting those uses, and looking at those parking calculations at that time. But we did want to take a quick look at our proposed change of a couple of things that we've had issues with more recently. Under the single-family and two-family dwellings, looking at adding one additional space required for each bedroom in excess of four. We've run into issues with some larger six-to-eight bedroom, each containing a bathroom development close to the university that were used mainly for more of a residential rental unit or cooperative housing. And they were only required to provide two off-street parking spaces because they are technically declared single-family dwellings. And so this was able to capture that issue that we've been having with the parking issues with those houses being constructed. And so that's meant to address that. And then we wanted to eliminate increase for developments adjacent to collector's arterials. So for duplexes of a certain size and multifamily, three bedrooms or more, we have this issue with, if you're adjacent to a collector arterial and you have direct access to that collector arterial, you have an increased requirement. And so what we're doing is just eliminating that, just to be across the board, .75 per bedroom, instead of going back and forth depending upon whether or not you're collector arterial. So proposing that change. Looking at adding an incentive for bicycle parking, and so this is not a requirement, this is a way to reduce the number of automobile parking spaces that you're required to have through providing bicycle parking. And so this is something that the commission and the committee were pretty excited about and happy with the outcome. The proposal would be a 10% reduction in automobile parking, and then the bicycle parking equals to four times the total number of reduced automobile spaces. So if you're required to have 40 automobile spaces, you could reduce that by four by providing bicycle parking. So it would be four times, so they reduced it by four, four times four, they'd have to provide 16 bicycle parking spaces, which would be like eight racks. And they would get a 10% reduction in the auto parking. And then underneath that, we have specific bike rack styles that we'd want to see, location of the racks, as well as lighting to prevent theft, sheltering mainly for multifamily, spacing an area, so defining how large the spaces need to be for bicycle parking. And that would be a new introduction into the off-street parking requirement section. And the last section we have within the section is landscaping. So we have a purpose statement, we have the current requirements. Purpose statement right now is, it just mainly refers to protecting adjacent, you know, it's aesthetics and protecting adjacent property values and adjacent development. So we're looking at beefing up that statement with all the things that, all the good things that landscaping does for the community and the parking lot and the patrons of those parking lots. Current requirements for landscaping, we require a three-foot exterior buffer with two-foot tall shrubs every six feet on center, one seven-foot tall tree every 10 parking spaces. And then over 50 parking spaces, we require this division into bays by three-foot islands. So this is an example of what this requirement means. Once you get over 50, the intention is to divide it into, so these would be two bays here divided by a three-foot linear landscape buffer in the center. So most communities go with these type of parking space sized islands, and that's what we'd be proposing, is to eliminate the, these large linear three-foot islands and go towards more of a parking space sized island throughout the parking lot. So we're going to expand the purpose statement, like previously mentioned, looking at restructuring exterior landscaping. So right now, we just have a lot of paragraphs. So it's two, three paragraphs, and they're hard to navigate. And so we'd be breaking that out for ease-of-use. Be looking at more of a consistent one tree of one-and-a-half-inch caliper every 40 lineal feet. This is, you know, allows for more consistency in the placement of trees within the parking area, and specifies the caliper. So, you know, this has been all over the board as far as the size of trees that we see, because we have the seven-foot height limitation. Well, when you're ordering a tree from the nursery, that's not really the way you order it, it's by caliper. So this was something the committee really was, you know, pretty heavily focused on, was specifying this as a more universal way of specifying trees. Shrubs every six feet, so we wouldn't be changing this at all. We'd just be saying that specifying the size. So moving away from the two-foot and the two, you know, two feet in height, and shifting towards one gallon for perennial, two gallons for deciduous or evergreen, and then requiring 50% to be evergreen. If the intention is to have some type of screening between adjacent properties and adjacent street right-of-ways, that screening only happens in the summertime if it's going to be a perennial. So wanted to make sure that that was included. And then consideration given to vehicular site obstruction. So I think we've all been in a parking lot where you have a evergreen tree that's, you know, close to the ground, maybe presents a site obstruction when you're turning the corner, and it makes a safety issue maneuvering the parking lot. So we'd just be including a statement within the section to discourage that. The interior landscaping section, so we'd be shifting from the bays to parking space-sized islands, reducing the threshold. So since these are, you know, very different ways, going from bays to the parking space-sized islands, we'd be proposing to reduce the threshold to 30 for the islands. This is something that the committee was split on. Planning and Zoning Commission initially recommended 20, which was on the high end of the spectrum. Usually municipalities that we looked at started somewhere around 12 spaces from when they kicked in landscape islands. We thought we'd go a little bit more conservative to start at 20. Pullman starts at 20, for instance. And so we took this to the committee. Committee was split, so half wanted to stay with 20, or wanted to go with 20, and then the other half wanted to stay with 50, even though the 50 is, you know, pretty much apples to oranges as far as the requirement. So Planning and Zoning ended up compromising for them, since they couldn't compromise, and they increased it from 20 to 30 for the threshold for islands. So that would be within the proposed ordinance tonight. And then specifying the size of these islands, so eight feet by the adjacent parking space length for an island size. So if you have a compact space, it's going to be 15 feet. If it's going to be a standard space, it'll be 20. And then once you start requiring islands, it'd be at a rate of one island per 12 parking space for the frequency. And then just specifying what these islands shall contain, similar to the exterior landscaping, one tree of one-and-a-half-inch caliper, and then the low shrubs of the gallon sizes that we specified with the exterior, as well as vegetative ground cover. And then we had an illustration to convey what we were intending for the double rows. So these are the circumstances where you have two islands at the end, just to make sure that these aren't, we were not saying that that's one island, that's really two, but you need to provide two trees, as well as some shrubs within that area. Consideration of site distances and parking lot lighting. We had quite a bit of discussion over how trees affect parking lot lighting and vice versa. So just wanted to identify that within the section. And then some flexibility to allow the zoning administrator to authorize the relocation of landscaping. Oftentimes landscaping's the last thing to go in, in these developments, and they're always running into issues with utility boxes and lighting and parking lots. And so just wanted to, you know, staff always works with the landscapers when they're out there, but wanted to make sure it was crystal clear that we can allow that. And Planning and Zoning did conduct a public hearing on the ordinance on April 26, 2017, recommended approval as presented. And staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing upon consideration of testimony presented, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions about any of these.
Okay, with that, I'll open counsel up questions to Michael before the public hearing. Catherine?
I appreciate, Mike, I appreciated your presentation at the administrative meeting too. It was really helpful, so thank you. My question has to do with, in the general provisions sections, 5G, and you talked about that the materials could be asphalt and concrete, or another, let's see, grading surface drainage and subgrading details. And so because new materials are coming out, and I'm sure Planning and Zoning talked about this, with concrete and asphalt and some things being more porous, is that being decided then by the zoning administrator? Like if there's new materials that could come forward for what's being poured, or what's being surfaced?
26, 2017, recommended approval as presented. And staff's recommendation is to conduct a public hearing. Upon consideration of testimony presented, approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions about any of these.
Okay, with that, I'll open council of questions to Michael before the public hearing. Catherine?
Mike, I appreciated your presentation at the administrative meeting, too. It was really helpful. So thank you. My question has to do with in the general provisions sections, five G, and you talked about that the materials could be asphalt and concrete or another, let's see, grading surface drainage and subgrading details. And so because new materials are coming out, and I'm sure planning and zoning talked about this, with concrete and asphalt and some things being more porous, is that being decided then by the zoning administrator? Like if there's new materials that could come forward for what's being poured or what's being surfaced?
Yeah, it would, it would fall under, you know, the section where we specify concrete or asphalt.
Yeah.
As long as it's of similar durability and utility. And that's why we wanted the city engineer to take a look at that.
Yeah.
So that would be covered underneath this section, and it will allow the city engineer to look at whatever's being proposed. You know, they can propose anything as long as it's, you know.
It has to be the same durability.
It has to be, yeah, the same durability as you would get with an asphalt or concrete.
Mm-hmm.
But that's to allow these alternative surfacing.
Yeah.
In order to be, you know, a mechanism for it to be approved through the city.
Because things are changing so quickly, and then that would be less. So you would be making that decision? Is that how it would work?
Les, I think she's directing that to you.
She is.
Yeah, because I would, are you the zoning administrator, or does it just depend per?
I am neither the zoning administrator or the city engineer. Kevin Lilly is our city engineer. He would be the one that would be involved in the review of the development project. And so therefore, would be the one that would help make that determination about whether it's an acceptable alternative. You're right, there are other things out there today, whether it's porous concrete, porous asphalt, pavers. We actually had a project some years ago where they came in with a proposal for a geo grid stability system with a gravel insert that was intended to allow moisture to drain through.
Right.
And then reduce runoff and detention requirements. We didn't have a mechanism under the current code to address that. So something had to actually work its all the way, all the way through council, just to get a variance. So this modification would help that in allowing the city engineer in his role as reviewing development projects to help make that determination.
And the reason I thought it was used, because I thought, because of being head of public works, that it kind of went all the way up to the top before. But just the way it reads, because there's so much zoning administrator power in the ordinance, that I thought it had to go all the way up the line. That's kind of just how I read it. So I didn't understand it. That's why I asked.
The zoning administrator would be the community development director or designee. So it's usually in the planning department. City engineer would, yeah, I mean Kevin Lilly with public works. So there is some overlap, primarily community development controls a lot of off-street parking requirements. Public works is more city rightaway, but they do review things like this.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions for Mike? Jim?
One question on the, on page nineteen of the packet where we're talking about the parking areas may be temporarily surfaced for a period not to exceed five years. And that's, that's like lined out, like we're eliminating that? We're not allowing a gravel parking lot for five years anymore?
Correct. Yeah, we'd be proposing to eliminate that allowance. So we'd be revising the section at the beginning. So you'd be allowed pretty much up to a year in order to get any parking lot improvements done. So previously, we had this section where we just allowed the paving to be deferred for up to five years. And so, you know, we'd had mixed results with that. Usually, if you have all the improvements that are required, so all the concrete curbing, the concrete sidewalks, you know, you have quite a bit of deterioration that happens once you have gravel up against that. And so a lot of the concrete needs to be replaced at the end of that time. It's also an issue with us tracking that. So maybe you have a future use user that may be a future owner of that property, where you really run into an issue. Well, they've got a five-year agreement, and well, that use is gone now. And so now we have a new use that wants to go in there. And, you know, it just, it just becomes issues.
Be another five years, they get another five-year permit.
Yeah, not necessarily. But it just, you know, becomes an issue with us tracking that and then, you know, enforcing that. And let's say they don't do that at the end of five years, and it's a church, and now we're being forced with, trying to revoke their certificate of occupancy and kick everybody out. You know, we don't like to do that. So and then you have, you know, issues with dust and vibration of these parking lots. And so that's, you know, why we'd be proposing to eliminate that. But, you know, in the committee's recommendation, they had looked at that. And usually, what they said was they usually include, you know, when you first, on the onset of a project, you always have the expenses of whether or not you're required to pave the parking lot in the beginning. And so those are all factored into the initial costs. And, you know, for some unforeseen circumstances, like the asphalt plants closed and they can't pave, you know, that's why we have, you know, temporary certificate of occupancies where we allow up to six months and then another six months. Initially, we were proposing just six months, but they wanted the ability to defer that for another six months for some unforeseen circumstance, maybe ground settling, issues like that. And so they, the committee and the commission were fine with the proposed changes on that.
Okay.
Thank you for clearing that up.
So I wanted to explore the tandem parking issue a little bit further. That's in multifamily where, clear me up if I'm wrong, but tandem parking is end to end?
Correct.
Yeah. And given that in the common lexicon, garage means storage space and not parking, are we working ourselves into an issue where the residents begin to occupy all of the other off-street parking to the exclusion of any visitors that roll in?
Well, that was our initial concern. I mean, that's why initially, when we had the ordinance in 2014, we just required, we just allowed those spaces within the garage to be counted as a corridor. We went back and looked at some of these projects that have utilized that, and they ended up with really a whole lot of parking, because they all had, each unit had its own garage, and then it had its own designated space in front of the garage. And, you know, we did some inventories of parking utilization within some of these apartment complexes. And it was coming in, you know, around eighty percent full. And so I think that we were comfortable with this, counting the spaces within the garage, you know, and you have a tendency to put your stuff in garages sometimes. And so that was always the concern, is visitor parking. And if somebody does tend to stuff the garage instead of park their vehicle in it. And so, you know, with this compromise of going to restricting it just to 50%, we thought we struck a happy median with, you know, counting that space within the garage and not providing a so substantial amount of parking as, you know, for this development that doesn't never gets utilized.
So the Good Friday, the Black Friday parking lot argument, where you're so overparking-lotted, it only gets used very occasionally.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, those, you know, maybe one, one weekend at a year where it's Super Bowl Sunday, there may be some overflow onto the street, but that's just not what we've been, you know, seeing.
So I'm guessing if things get carried away, that it could always be revisited within the utilization table and changed back if things aren't working well.
Sure. You know, and these, these apartments tend to be a little bit higher end, you know, that provide garages. And so they tend to attract a less, you know, maybe a fam, you know, families with children, people that usually don't have as many visitors as maybe a college-oriented apartment complex. And so I don't think we'll have quite that issue. But yeah, we can always monitor that. And then the amount of apartments that actually utilize garages is pretty small. It's, you know, kind of this niche that are, you know, looking for more family-oriented apartment living. So.
So you figure the compromise is okay?
Yeah.
Another question. John?
Well, I would make a motion if.
We haven't opened the public hearing yet, John.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
So, but Walter?
Just a comment to compliment Mike. He managed to take an hour and a half presentation to the administrative committee down to forty-five minutes tonight, including questions, which is much appreciated. And I think you covered everything just as well. But worked well.
Okay.
We'll see if we can get through the public hearing just as, just as well.
Okay. Well, I'll open the public hearing at 7:58, and I will take testimony in favor of this. Nobody's rushing to the podium, so I'll take any against or in general comments on this public hearing. Please state, please state your name and address, even though we all know you, Joanne. We need further record, please.
Joanne Manita, 203 South Howard. I have some questions and just a few reservations. And I apologize, I wasn't able to be at the earlier public hearing. And I don't think I'll make it too lengthy for Walter.
As long as you need.
One question I have is about the central business district, because you have strike, struck out where it says all provisions shall apply to the central business district. And you said to delete that. So that means all of the circulation, pavement, screening, landscaping would not apply to a parking lot in central business? That's a question.
Mike, you want to take that?
Do you have a specific portion you're pointing to?
It's, I have it. G? Is it A, G? You even referred to it. It says all provisions.
Yeah, I see it. I see it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the clarification is, if you look at underneath subsection three, application of off-street parking and loading requirements, we'd be striking, yeah, central business zoning district. The off-street parking schedule should not apply within the CB zoning district. However, all other provisions of this section shall apply within the central business zoning district. So we're relocating that to the exemptions section. And the, at the very beginning of that section, it says the following zoning districts have off-street parking requirements specific to each respective zone and are not required to meet section fours dash six dash five E five below. However, all other provisions of section four, six, five shall apply.
Oh, so all these would apply to CB?
Yep.
Okay. Can you all also explain what the 10%?
Mike, if you're in front of the, we can't hear you, Joanne.
Thank you. That's reassuring. Can you explain what the 10% credit is for expanding a business, expanding the lots? You said something about 10% credit?
Yeah, the 10% credit would be, so we'd be recognizing, so you have a new use going in, so maybe a change of use scenario, where you have a new use that goes into an existing space, an existing building. So right now, maybe the existing use requires five off-street parking spaces, but they don't have, they don't currently have a parking lot. You have a new use that comes in and it requires 10 spaces. We don't retroactively go back and require you to put in 10 spaces. Just the difference between what the existing use would require and what the new use requires. So we, in this scenario, we'd have five. The 10% is just to allow a little bit more flexibility. So say you had, you know, 10 existing and 10 that were, you know, 11 that were required as part of a new development. This would just give the flexibility to have that change of use go through and not to put in any parking. You essentially get a credit for one parking space in that scenario. So it allows for the reuse, gentrification of existing buildings as uses change. So like on the North Main Corridor, where you have buildings that are built out to the property lines, but they're in the motor business zone, so parking's required. We've had issues with new uses, you know, maybe there are auto shops and a printing publishing house wants to go into one of these uses. We've had issues with, you know, having them having to go find parking or maybe be faced with tearing down a portion of the building to build a parking lot. And so it just allows a little bit more flexibility with kind of adaptive reuse of existing buildings is the intention.
And last one. I recognize that this change takes a lot of the provisions that would have gone to the board of adjustment and lets the city staff take care of them. And this, I suppose for small things, this is a good idea. But I worry about larger lots. For example, joint use, and it's a theater or a church or something, and you have 20 parking lots and 20 spaces, and you're joint using it with a bank or something like that. I think if this is, if you would say 10 or more, it would go to the board of adjustment. Because otherwise, the citizens don't know what's going on until it's happened. And once it's happened, it's awfully hard to change it, because everybody's already up and running in their business. So I would think that changes of lots with 10 or more should go to the board of adjustment. That would be my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Mr. Mayor, on that, on that question.
Yep.
Mike, if I may, can you enumerate the instances where you've moved it from the board of adjustment to the zoning administrator?
Well, it's mainly.
Off the top of your head, I guess, because I can't, I'm not sure I remember them all.
Well, it's, there's mainly two. So there's off-site parking, where you have a parking lot that's located a certain distance away from the property. And then you have joint use, where you have a parking lot that satisfies the off-street parking requirements for a daytime or a nighttime use.
Those are the only two where you're doing that?
Those are the only two. We're inserting some flexibility in landscaping to allow the zoning administrator to make slight deviations with moving trees or shrubs. But yeah, as far as the approval, you know, in our past experience, bringing something like that to the board of adjustment, there really isn't anything to mitigate. As, you know, you have the distance that it can be away. You have, you know, it says safe walking distance, so they're required to use crosswalks and sidewalks. And so other than that, there's no nuisances. And so it's, you know, those have been pretty simple and not a whole lot for the board to review. And so it's, you know, dragging somebody through the process for not a whole lot of, you know, result that, something the staff couldn't do on their own.
Before, let's, let's go on to more public comment. Is there other?
Special use.
I want to talk, yep. Hang on just a second, everybody. Joanne, I'm not going to take any more of your conversation, but I will take other, for against or general comments about the parking, please come up. State your name and address for us.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Michael Curley, 127 South Washington, Suite Five. If you haven't had longer than last Friday to look at this ordinance, I would hope that you would not pass this tonight and not give yourselves another couple of weeks to think about the variety of instances that this may affect. One thing I would suggest to you, first of all, is in section A, three, C, there's some language that says, in other words, a 110% credit is given to the most recent lawful use of the property. That is incorrect, if I understand the meaning correctly. A threshold of 110% is different than a credit of 110%. My understanding, the 10% also appears in the expansion and enlargement section, which is D, A three D, but it doesn't have the 110% language. Here's the simple example. I hate to put you to the math of it, but if you had a parking lot that required 100 spaces today, and you're going to require 111 because of an expansion or a change of use, if you have, if you only need 110, you get that 10 free, right? Because you get a 10% bump. But if you need 11%, then you're going to have to put in 11 new spaces unless you get 110% credit. Because 110% credit of 100 is 110, and you'd only have to put in one space, not 11. So that language, I believe, should be stricken, the 110% language. Because it's, I don't believe it's what's intended, because it's not what's stated in D. I'm also concerned about sequential expansions. If, if there's no tie-in to the use or parking requirement on the date this ordinance is passed, then I can expand 10% five times and never put in an additional parking place, space. So I think, I have only had today to look at this, and I So, I think, I, I have only had today to look at this and I can't suggest exact language, but I think there's a way to tie it to the current use so that, or current requirement so that sequential expansions would then be required to, to meet that threshold. So that if you expanded 10 percent twice, you would have to put some additional parking in. There's a section I don't quite understand, the complexity, well, yeah, the complexity of, quite frankly, and, and the numbers. Page, packet page 26, no, I apologize, yes, packet page 26 and 27 have the requirement for commercial uses. I don't know if anybody did the math, but if you look at it, up to 25,000 feet, you got the same requirement, but you've got it split up into two different, I should say you, it is split up into two different calculations. So let's look at the first one for a minute. If you have less than 5,000 square feet, you have one per 400 feet. So if I have a 4,900-foot building, I need 13, right? 48 is 12. I'm over, so I need 13. Now, if I can expand to 5,000 feet, I only need 10. That doesn't make sense to me. Especially since it continues with the per 400 feet after that. It seems to me that the simple answer is to just say if your building is less than 25,000 square feet, you have one per 400 square feet. And if it's over 25,000, then I think the 60 is correct, but I may be wrong about, actually, I think it's 62 or 63. So you'd change that number to be consistent. Also, there, and I apologize, I'm not sure if I'm correct about this. There is a section of the code that says, if you have a fractional piece, you need to provide a parking space. So if you, if you're supposed to provide 2.25, you're supposed to provide, you have to provide three spaces. I didn't see a corresponding phrase for the square footage. So that if I am right at a 4,900-foot, square foot building, I would need 13. That's the way I interpret it, but I don't think technically it says that. It says fractions, but it doesn't talk about fractions of square feet. So, I believe it should say per 400 square feet or portion thereof. Or in the over 25,000 square foot section, where it reduces it to 300 square feet or portion thereof. I think, I haven't had a chance to examine this, but if I remember correctly, and the ordinance is still there, if, if my building is destroyed or I want to rehab it to more than 70 percent of its current value, I have to meet all other requirements of the current building code. I don't have any grandfather provisions. And I'm not sure if, I'm not sure how you would want the parking to apply to that situation, but I'd think you'd want to look at it. That would be different from an expansion of use or a cha, or it could be a change of use, but, um-
Well, Mike, we're going to discuss that here in a few minutes.
Okay.
Have you got anything else? Would you kind of wrap it up? I'm giving you a lot of time here. And I'm going to have our guy talk about it, but I'll wait until after the public hearing ends.
Nope, I think that's it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Other public testimony? Okay, we'll close the public hearing at 8:14. Mike, I'd like you to come up and, some of the things that Mr. Curley had asked, and refresh us on the new and the old and some advice here.
In the, you know, looking at the commercial section, there's no proposed changes there. So this is currently what we have. So with the 5,000 to 25,000 square feet and those calculations, we, you know, recognize there is a discrepancy as you go down the list in the, the commercial, as far as the, the retail, you know, categories. And so, those are some, those are items that we'll be addressing here in the next couple of months as far, as part of the use table ordinance. So the only changes within the parking table are, like I had gone over before, the single-family, two-family, if you're in excess of four bedrooms, and then removing the collector arterials. So everything else is remaining the same as it exists today. So, you know, those are some things that we'll be working through with planning and zoning, as we formulate the off-street parking requirements table and revise what we currently have. If you look through all the uses within this table, you can see that it's lacking a lot of the uses that we currently have. So, we'll be expanding upon this list and, and taking that into further consideration. So, we'll look at clarifying that here in the next couple of months when we bring that use table ordinance before you.
Question on the fractional parking spots.
Fractional, it still applies. So if you look, after we've got the dimensional standards with all the illustrations there, look underneath that, subsection E, we have fractional requirements. It says fractional requirements shall require one space. So if we do the calculation and you end up with a requirement of 2.25 spaces, depending upon your square footage, then we'd round up to three.
Walter, did you have a question for-
Just on that, on that, to make sure I understand, Mike. You're, you're saying Mr. Curley has a point in that when you work some of this math in this current table, there's no changes. It's what we have in the books now. It doesn't quite work in some cases. In other words-
Well, it, yeah, the hierarchical, you know, way it's, it's, I think, intending to progress, depending upon your square footage, it gives you a break as soon as you, you know, end up reaching a certain threshold there. So, yeah, I've-
So he's correct. My question then becomes, is that what we want?
Well, we'll have to assess that further. We hadn't looked into the, the entire uses within the chart. We're waiting for the use table to review all of that. We could have a discussion on that, you know, when the use table ordinance moves forward.
Catherine?
No, it was just that we ended up talking about this at the administrative committee, about this use table thing. So, I know that, that we had to dig into it, and you were like, hold up, hold up, we're going to do that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll address it. It'll just be brought forth with our whole use table ordinance because it, it makes the most sense.
Art, and one other topic that Mr. Curley brought up was the sequential expansion issue, where, he's right, if the ordinance refers to the immediate prior use, then you can expand again and again and again and still have your five parking spaces all the way along. And should it, in fact, be tied to that original use so that you get your credit for the original, but then if you expand and don't have to put in 10 spaces, and you can just ride with the five, the example you gave?
Well, I don't-
Then what happens when they decide to go in and expand again? You still have your five spaces, because that's the immediately preceding use. And then that could lead to interesting bookkeeping to keep track of where you started and what you're doing. And so, what are your thoughts on that one?
Well, I don't know if that it'd make monetary sense to be able to do that. With each change of use, you're going to have specific building code requirements that just to save on one space, when you may have to put in a sprinkler system?
The third expansion down the line?
Yeah, I, I, you know, I don't think that changes of use are going to happen that frequent that we're, we would have a concern over allow, you know, propagating one space over multiple years.
Is there ever, have we ever had an example of that? Mike, to your knowledge, or Bill Bellnaps or Les's? Any knowledge of that ever happening?
Any knowledge of, Your Honor?
What we're just talking about.
The sequential expansion, where you get credit for what was there before you expanded, so you only have to put in X number more spaces and you get credit for what's already existing. What happens when you expand several times over? Is it tied to the original or is it tied to the immediate preceding use?
Well, as you were, that doesn't exist today. So we don't have any history of that activity occurring because that provision hasn't been in the code today. The what's before you would say the current, most current lawful use of that property would be the basis upon that expansion and where that credit would be given. Now, whether a use would change over time or whether somebody would try to utilize that for incremental expansion of their building or space, I guess there's a possibility of that occurring. I don't know how likely that is, that that would be a significant issue to have that, that additional credit. But certainly, as it is now, it is the most recent or current lawful use of the property that would be the basis for that termination. You have equal challenges associated with tracking what was used to that property back in 2017, when this code was changed, and what was the requirement at that point in time. That is almost an equal challenge you have when you look at properties over the long term. I don't know that looking at just the most current lawful use and a 10 percent credit that's being granted here really would cause any potential adverse harm. This was a provision that in the review of the 10 other codes, I can't recall whether it was Missoula, I think it was, that had this, that created that flexibility for change of use, where there was only minor changes in required off-street parking that associated with that use. And that seemed like it was provided flexibility for property owners to have uses with fairly minor changes in the parking requirements without requiring them to do something fairly drastic or try to go find additional property to secure parking on. So that's why we proposed it before the council this evening.
Okay. Other questions for Mike?
Again, for Mike, following on Ms. Manilla's point about changing from the Board of Adjustment to the zoning administrator, what would you think about leaving it as you have it, changing it to the zoning administrator, but doing some type of public notice that the zoning administrator is considering?
I don't know that I'd have any concerns with that. I mean, we-
Bill, you want to comment on that? Did you, the zoning administrator?
The only question, I mean, the, the two potential applications of this instance are, you can have a parking lot that's not on the property being served and there's a specified distance that has to be within. So the question becomes, if it's within that distance, really what is the, the purpose of the hearing and the process-
There's no real decision to be made?
There's no real decision. I mean, these are very prescriptive actions of a certain percentage of parking can be provided by another use that has a different operating characteristic or different operating time period. And it's already scripted out what percentage of the spaces that could go to the other use. If, if all those facts come before the board, what is there really for deliberation and really is, is that kind of process necessary? If you wanted to go through a public hearing process and you're really shifting to more of a hearing examiner role, or then you could provide, I mean, if you're going to provide notice, then you need to really provide an opportunity for due process and comment to be considered and part of that decision-making. Or is this just a ministerial duty where the code specifies a distance where parking can be located, or a percentage of parking for one nighttime use that can be used to satisfy another daytime's use? If the code is very prescriptive in what can be done, then really is that additional process effort and time for everybody involved necessary or not? We felt in these limited instances that they were not.
Mr. Mayor? Bill, the, the same line of reasoning regarding shared use?
Correct.
That, that, that's not prescriptive. That's a decision. Do we allow the church and the movie house or the bar and the, and the church or whatever to share a particular lot?
But how much can be shared between those two uses is, is set up, the percentages of shared, the types of uses that can be nighttime or daytime. I mean, that's, that's very spelled out in the code as well.
Okay. John?
Well, I would then make a motion that we approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by John and a second by Catherine. Hang on just a second. I'm going to re-read this, to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary. Walter?
I, I will support the motion, but with, with the statement that I am trusting that we will look at, under the use table efforts, we will look at the math questions that Mr. Curley has brought up regarding the current requirements.
Agreed. Okay. You got that, Laurie? I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. We'll move on to item number seven, which is 933 and 951 Meadow Street Lot Adjustment. I guess, Michael, will be doing that, are you doing that for us tonight, sir?
I am, yeah. I'd like to present, but I think a button was hit here, and I don't know, I may need technical assistance here to get it back up.
Geez, that usually happens to me sometimes. Here comes Zach. Zach's our guy. Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. I did not read that ordinance, Gary. Did we just pass? Ordinance 2017-05, so before you get going while you're fooling with that, Mike, I better read this ordinance that we just passed. An ordinance to the City of Moscow, Idaho, municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment in Moscow City Code Title 4, Chapter 6, amending the off-street parking requirements, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable and providing for this ordinance be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I don't know if anybody, it just dawned on me, so.
Staff was waiting to see if you realized it.
Okay. Mike, continue now. Thank God we had a little blurb in the thing here, so we're ready to go.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you tonight, we have a lot line adjustment request. This was on consent agenda, but the applicant had approached staff and wanted to shift the lot line another additional two feet instead of three to five. And so, we ended up putting this on regular agenda, and I just go through it briefly here. These are the properties highlighted in red in the ascending screen. These are the Joseph Street Ballfields, Joseph Street here, and then you have Meadow, which provides direct access to the properties. They're in the R2 Zone, which is moderate-density residential. Looking at the total square footages, the northerly parcels, about 11,809 square feet. Southerly parcel is 10,953. Minimum lot size for R2 is 7,000. Looking at shifting that common lot line five feet to the north, so that would result in the northerly parcel to be a little over 11,000 square feet in size, and the southerly to be about 11,500 square feet in size. Just going through the R2 requirements, so lot width is 60, lot area is 7,000, and then you have the common setback requirements, which are these, this proposed lot line adjustment, both the structures would meet the setback requirements. So, staff would recommend approval, a lot line adjustment with no conditions. I'll answer any questions, Jim.
Questions for Mike?
Was there still the agreement between the neighbors like there was in the preceding? Before, it was just the three feet?
Yeah, yep. The, the neighbors have agreed upon the five feet, and so, as soon as they, if they were to get approval tonight, they would follow through with a quit claim to convey the property.
Okay. Good.
And, if I may?
Walter?
And, and the previous quit claim was or was not filed with the county?
Uh, was not. That, we had advised them to hold off. He had prematurely put that in the letter, so it was not.
Well, I would move approval of the lot line adjustment with no conditions.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion by Art and a second by Gina, to approve the lot line adjustment request with no conditions. I'll start the roll, John.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. We'll go to item number eight, Sixth and Jackson Realignment Bid Results Contract Award, Alessa McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor and council.
The Sixth Street-Jackson Intersection Realignment Project is one that we have talked about here before on a number of occasions. It's a project that we've been working on for some time and a project that we took out to bid to proceed to construction. So we did advertise the project. Unfortunately, I only received one bid on this project, which may have been an indication of the, perhaps the number of projects that other contractors have, the time of year the project was bid, you know, possibly a couple other items. The bid that came in from Albright and Sons was fairly high above our engineers estimate for the project. And so we had some discussions with the Albright firm about why that was. And there were two items in particular that really stood out as having numbers that were drastically higher than what we'd anticipated. They were in the area of street trees and tree grate installation and the frames for the trees. And then the illumination. And illumination in particular was one that was substantially higher than what we have seen in the past and what we expected for this project. So we took a look at that. We talked with the contractor about those items to see if there was something that perhaps either they didn't understand or wasn't clear in the specifications or something that was lacking or something they were seeing that we were missing. We also talked with them about the prospect of perhaps reducing the overall scope of the project in a way through a change order that could bring the project cost down. They worked with us and we did what we could, but we could not get to a point where we felt the numbers were low enough that it was appropriate to move forward with awarding this contract at this time. So with that, this evening, we are recommending that we reject this bid. And the intent then would be that we would go back out to bid at an appropriate time. And there's a couple of things that are in play right now. One of the things we would do is potentially modify the scope of the project to remove some components that were in the original design so that we could install them later. For instance, street trees, which might be in the way of construction on the adjacent URA property when they're building a building there, potentially this year, potentially next year. And we would set up for those trees maybe in the rebid of the project, but we would install them at a later date and an appropriate time, in the fall or the spring, with maintenance, you know, by our city forces. That's the kind of thing that, you know, street trees, if they had to come back in the fall and plant them and then do maintenance on them, it adds cost. And so it's something that perhaps we would be better able to do in-house. We might also look at the prospect of setting up for all the street lights, but actually not installing the light poles themselves, again, to keep the area open perhaps for construction of the URA parcel there to the south side, assuming that's moving forward. And then we would install those poles at a later date once that building construction reached the point that there was no chance of damage to those lights. So those are the kind of things we're looking at. We'll be also looking at a couple other items as well and looking at how best to advance this project. There's a couple of options. One would be to look at those potential scope revisions along with some others, repackage it and put it out to bid in the winter or the spring of, well, frankly, the winter of this year, fall or winter, with the idea that it would be a better bidding climate, maybe more contractors would look at it because they're not as busy and the more traditional timeline. The disadvantage of that is it pushes the construction back until summer of 18. And we would like this project to move forward. Another alternative would be to go ahead and repackage it as it exists right now with some scope revisions, as I've just discussed, and put it back on the street right away. And that one has some potential, but we also then face the issue of if contractors are busy and we only got one bid, is that going to be any different if we modify things? There were some things in the discussion that seemed to indicate that perhaps there were some, there was some potential for others to come forward. There is one other alternative we're discussing and we're having conversations about it this week, which is the potential to perhaps include some of this work within the development of the URA parcel as needed to allow them to advance because there's such things as utility connections and, you know, items like that, that they need to be able to connect to, that this project would be doing. And then take whatever's left, package it anew, and put it out to bid in the winter so that we construct the rest of it next summer. So some options on the table for tonight. The issue is essentially just rejecting this bid as being too high and recognition, you know, just so that you know that staff will be continuing to work on this. We would like to get it going and get it done for a lot of reasons, but there are a lot of things that we are looking at as potential options. So anywhere from rebidding, you know, as early as maybe starting next week to some kind of a hybrid project to rebidding in the winter. But for tonight, recommendation from staff is to reject the bid as received.
Questions for Les? Walter?
Walter? Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to reject the low bid from M.L. Albright and Sons on the Sixth and Jackson Realignment Project.
Okay, we got a motion by Walter and a second by John to reject the low bid from M.L. Albright and Sons. I'll start the roll, John.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I.
Okay, thank you, Les. With that, it's 8:35. We are going to take a five-minute recess. Be back at 8:40. Okay, it's 8:40 and we are going to resume our meeting and we are going to go on to the next item, which is item number nine, consideration of renaming Blackbird Crossing to Blackbridge Station. Dwight, courtesy of the podium, sir?
Okay, thank you. Well, tonight, what we're asking for is a name change from, if you recall, the Blackbird Station or Blackbird Crossing. It's out by the old Titemans Restaurant or Titemans Grocery Store. And anyway, it's, this is, this topic has been going on for some years now, but officially back in December, the Pathways Commission officially recommended that we make this change and it's primarily a safety thing. And right now, if you look, if you're out there and you look, you can see a trail basically that cuts right across the little drive and over to the mall. And the name Crossing, the thought was that perhaps that encourages people to think of that as a crossing. And that is not what the intent is. There will be a ditch cut out, so there will be some discouragement, but they didn't want the name to be the encouragement to make the crossing. So after a lot of deliberation, it was changed or recommended to be changed to Blackbridge Station. And that was by the Pathways Commission and then followed by the Parks and Recreation Commission with the same recommendation. This was reviewed last week at the Administrative Committee and they also recommended this change.
Okay. John, you-
I, I think the idea is very good and it does exactly what Dwight just elucidated, that we have to make sure that people who have been using that as a place to cross, we really don't want that to happen anymore. And by building it and then naming it a station instead of a crossing, I think we'll go, I would make a motion that we officially rename Blackbird Crossing to Blackbird Station.
Second.
Okay. You got a motion by John and a second by Gina to officially rename Blackbird Crossing to Blackbridge Station. I'll start the roll, Walter.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Considered it a call Blackbird Station. No, thank you. Dwight, item number 10, is also Dwight, accept Bill Parks's donation towards the purchase of Indian Hills Park playground equipment. Dwight, you have got the podium on this one as well.
Okay. Well, that's still not working. There we go. Okay. Mr. Bill Parks, as you're probably all familiar with, he lives over in the Indian Hills area and he's been a proponent of the Indian Hills Park, the concept basically from the beginning for years now. And he has offered a $25,000 donation toward the purchase and installation of the playground that we're currently planning on for this late summer, early fall. And of course, we need the city council's approval to accept that donation. As you'll recall, Mr. Parks also donated some funds toward the purchase of a lot that makes up part of this park and he's been a real proponent of this. He's not here tonight, but he did send me an email and said that if he was here, he said, "Moscow is a special place and the children in the neighborhood need a playground." And so with that, the recommendation is to accept this donation.
Walter?
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that we accept Mr. Parks's generous $25,000 charitable donation for the Indian Hills Park.
Seconded. Well, okay, we've got a motion by Walter and a second by Art to accept a $25,000 donation from Bill Parks for the purchase and installation of new playground equipment for Indian Hills Park.
Could I ask one quick question?
You can, John.
Dwight, with the addition of the training that we have given one of the members of your staff, how much do you think it will increase the value of that $25,000?
Well, you can figure installation, you're probably saving about 15 grand, maybe a little more.
So it's, this is a rather big contribution and big donation by Mr. Parks.
Oh, it is. Big time. And, yeah, really appreciated. We have some topographical issues in this particular park that will increase the cost of laying down the pathway to get to it. And so this, this just really helps a lot.
Good. Thank you.
John, with that, I'll start the roll with you.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And I.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Bill Parks, for the generous $25,000 donation. You've always been a very generous man and we know you love Moscow and this is part of showing that he's very active in our community, has been for years and years and years, and we certainly appreciate it. Okay, with that, we will move on to item number 11, commitment of Hamilton funds to park playground development. That's also Dwight. And before we get going on this, even though this is not a public hearing, I plan on letting a public testimony this evening. So Dwight?
Okay. Well, since we've been through most of this just two weeks ago, I'll be a little more brief this go-around. If you'll recall, the staff is requesting a commitment of the remaining Hamilton bequest. And that's about 1.9 million in addition to the remaining personal property that if sold would likely, probably, maybe, be about $100,000 once sold. This is where the confusion might have been the last time we met and any future interest earnings will remain in the present fund to offset operational costs for the HERC. And this is for the future playgrounds, equipment and the installation of the pathways to those playgrounds in our undeveloped park properties. Playgrounds would also be in the future for replacements if needed. And of the current 2.9 million, the city council's previously earmarked 1 million of that for the Palouse Ice Rink. And with that, like I said, the clarification, the question came up about the interest earnings and I apologize to you. I just, I should have anticipated that question. I made some assumptions and so I should have talked to my boss first and made sure we were all on the same page. So sorry about the confusion, but the request is still the same, approving the resolution committing the remaining Hamilton bequest for future purchases of playground equipment, installation and the preliminary pathway access to those playgrounds for city park properties.
Just to be clear, Dwight, it's not just 1.9 for parks, it's 1.9 plus the surplus-
Correct.
-property.
Correct.
Meaning some small items or something or other that are locked up somewhere?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Dwight, I'm going to let us hear from the public on this. Anybody who wants to talk about it, please state your name and address and let us know what is on your mind.
I'm Marshall Comstock, 932 Mountain View in Moscow.
Welcome, Marshall.
Mayor and city council, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I've been involved with the Hamilton funds from the beginning. I was very fortunate to have a few meetings with Mr. Hamilton before he passed. And I kind of got to know the man and his ideas and what he wanted for the city of Moscow. It was his idea before he passed away that he had two passions about the youth of Moscow. His first passion was that he wanted the city of Moscow to own a gymnasium rec center on their own that wasn't affiliated with the school district, that the city of Moscow had complete control- wasn't affiliated with the school district, that the city of Moscow had complete control of. That was his number one priority. His second passion was that he wanted to establish a fund, a permanent funding source that underprivileged kids in the city of Moscow could access all rec programs, swimming passes, whatever they needed and be able to do that. As Mr. Hamilton, uh, as a youth, grew up in Moscow and he wasn't privileged to be able to, to participate in a lot of those rec programs because his family plainly didn't have the money. And he wanted to move forward with a permanent fund that the youth, the underprivileged youth of the city of Moscow would be able to access and participate in programs like that. I understand now that, that the Parks and Rec Department does have a scholarship fund, which I am very proud of and, and very much approve of. But Mr. Hamilton's idea was to have a permanent funding source, that there would not have to be donations from great individuals every year. So generally, I'm very much pleased with the direction that the city has taken with, with the expenditure of the Hamilton funds. Those funds are a direct benefit for the youth of the city of Moscow and I'm very pleased to see the direction of those going. Now, we're getting down to the tail end of the expenditures of those funds and so it's up to the council and the mayor to set priorities about where the remaining funds should go. And I've looked at the list that, that Dwight has provided. I think it's a, a great list, but I think there's a couple of things that might be missing. One of the things that Mr. Hamilton was passionate and, and I have been kind of a watchdog of those funds on a personal basis, is that those funds go to the direct benefit of the youth of Moscow. And on that list of what the additional funds are going for, I see no mention of any ki- kind of permanent fund for the underprivileged youth. And I also see in the resolution that there is a statement there that the interest from those funds be directed towards maintenance and operation for the HERC Center. And it's my opinion that by directing those funds to maintenance and operation goes, is different than the wishes of Mr. Hamilton. I, I think that those funds would get lost in an obscure line item of maintenance and not realize that they were, they actually came for the direct benefit of the youth of Moscow. So that's my number one concern is that those, that funding mechanism actually go into direct benefit, not indirect benefit for the youth of Moscow. After you look at the, the previous resolution, the Resolution 2003, I have a lot of deep respect for that coun- the council at that time. They were very intelligent, conservative people. And they passed that resolution. If you look at the resolution, my signature is on that resolution. However, I didn't get a vote that night. And I didn't necessarily agree with the resolution. And I look at the new resolution and it hasn't changed very much. But I am now, um, concerned about the use of the rest of the funds. And I understand staff's argument. I mean, to be fiscal, responsible and prudent and look out for the best interests of the city, there's nobody better than Mr. Redner. I mean, he, he does what's best for the city of Moscow all the times. And I very seldom disagree with, with his opinion. But in this one case, I have to disagree with Mr. Redner and Mr. Curtis. I would rather see those funds go towards a direct benefit project or a direct benefit scholarship fund than to see them go to maintenance and operation. So, with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Marshall.
I have a question.
You have a question for Marshall?
Yes, sir. Um, thanks for coming. And I'm, and I'm, I appreciate your perspective. So, uh, my question had to do with, um, the intent was for direct benefit and are you questioning the 1.9 or just the maintenance and operation?
Both.
Both. And-
I'm, I'm not questioning so much the 1.9 because I see how that goes to direct benefit of, of the youth of Moscow.
Okay.
What I would like to see is a reconfiguration of the priorities so that either some of the money from the 1.9 could go to a permanent scholarship fund or the monies from the, uh, the interest go into that fund.
And when you, when you, um, think of this permanent scholarship fund, can you give a little more detail?
Well, um, basically I would, I would ask Dwight to expand on the scholarship fund that we have now. And I would think that those funds would be able to be diverted actually into that fund that exists right now. But it was Mr. Hamilton's priority. We didn't have that scholarship fund at the time that Mr. Hamilton was alive. But it was definitely one of his passions to have a fund similar to this setup for the, for underprivileged use.
Well, then, I, I don't know how many people have benefited from the scholarship fund, Dwight? Do you have that information?
Well, I, I don't have exact numbers. Uh, we report each year on the use of that. There is a cap. Um, it was being abused under the previous system that we had. So caps were put on there to, to help with that and, and it seems to have. Um, right now, the City Council, in our current, uh, way of doing things, has been allocating $18,000 toward that each year, but it is part of the budget process. Um, so, um, you know, uh, right now, monies that come in for, um, non-residents are purely donation and not out of that 18,000. So, um, uh, we have turned people away. We have run out, um, but, um, not a lot. But of course, a lot of the people that had been abusing the system are no longer using it because they don't meet the criteria. Um, but I, I don't have the exact numbers with me. I wasn't-
I just wondered if it was like several hundred over, when was the scholarship put in place? Cause that's what you're referring to.
It's been a while.
Has it been since the 2003 resolution then?
I think it was shortly after that. It was before Dwight's time here.
If I may.
Gary.
The scholarship fund came into effect because council, uh, we needed some management of the amount of, uh, scholarships or opportunities were provided to the public. Previous to that, it was just a waiver that was issued. Uh, the policy was if anybody, uh, couldn't afford it, they didn't have to provide any sort of financial, um, where with all the, no evidence, they were just issued a waiver. And that came into, uh, we couldn't manage it fiscally. So, uh, it was placed in. We actually developed a scholarship fund to try and, and manage that.
Walter, you have a question?
Yeah, let me see if I can pull some of this together. And, and to follow up on Gary's comment, we found that, that there were certain people that were just, appeared to be using the Parks and Rec programs for, for babysitting. I mean, they were taking thousands of dollars to a single family. Um, and so the council, four years ago or so, um, restricted the use of the scholarship fund to Moscow residents, restricted it to people that could show proof of need through either, help me Dwight, through-
It's SNAP, uh, the free lunch program or reduced lunch program. Um, there's two others. Um-
WIC and something else.
Yes.
And that, and, and there was concern, well, you're cutting off the people that are non-residents, but we take, when we get donations that are not specific to residents, we put those in a separate pot and non-residents have the ability to get scholarships out of those. Dwight's point that it appears that we have cut that obvious abuse out has, has worked through what we're doing. We do $18,000 a year from general fund from taxes. The interest, Marshall, on the current funds in the Hamilton fund, the corpus is about 24,000 a year. So the two don't close. Um, I guess Dwight, I might, might as well ask you, can you use another 6,000 in the scholarship fund or would it go unused? Can you, I, I know you weren't prepared for this, but-
Well, um, under our present conditions, uh, probably some of it would not be used if it, you know, remains, uh, for residents only. And, uh, because we're just, we're just getting right to the end of it when, at the end of the year-
When it runs out of-
Of the present 18,000. So some of it would likely be used, but probably not all of it.
Okay. Um, so just to-
Some of this is which pocket are you taking money from? I mean, we are providing scholarships.
We're doing it with tax dollars. Um, if we do it out of the interest, then the tax dollars stay with the citizens. But your other argument that it should go toward projects, the likelihood, I think, of getting a future council to come up with a policy of 24,000 a year to add to Dwight's project budget is small. Um, I did make an argument back, uh, at committee to use the interest toward the projects. Um, that didn't, didn't pass the committee. So it's just some balls up in the air and it's a matter of what the council wishes to do.
Mr. Mayor. Marshall?
Yeah, and to me, I think it's, it's a bit of a philosophical question. Should the money go towards programs or scholarship fund? Or should they go in some obscure line item for maintenance? And knowing Bob Hamilton, the short time that I was able to visit with him, I'm sure, quite certain that he would rather it gone into scholarship funds for direct benefit projects instead of maintenance.
Unfortunately for Marshall, he was on the losing end of that in 2003.
Yeah.
The way the resolution was written. Is there anybody else out here like to speak about this tonight?
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Marshall. Mr. Mayor.
John.
Seems to me that we could, if we were to, uh, do what Marshall's talking about and take that, uh, 18 to 24,000, that is, uh, what we are earning from the, uh, Hamilton fund and, uh, make it, uh, directly responsible for, uh, paying for scholarships, the city would still control it. And at the same time, keeping the rest of the budget that the city has in mind, we could reduce the amount of budget that Parks and Rec has by a similar amount. And if we do that, we are going to achieve, I think, the same goal and it'll help Marshall from his philosophical point. And, uh, and I have no problem with that, Marshall. I really don't. Uh, and at the same time, it will be providing the scholarships that are necessary and we will then be diverting 18 to 24,000 dollars back into the general fund or to the street department or whatever.
So what you're saying is 18,000 dollars, if I heard this right, is going into the scholarship fund now for Parks and Rec. That would be taken away from Parks and Rec.
Yeah.
And it's an interest amount going back into it.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
If I understand that right.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. The problem I see with this is that when the, when the corpus is spent, the 24,000 dollars won't exist anymore.
Exactly.
So what, what Marshall's talking about is something that's more of a, of a permanent fund, uh, of, uh, trust, if you will, that only, that only the interest would be spent and the corpus would stay the same. So if we, uh, say all the things that are in the safety deposit box and X amount of the corpus were set aside never to be spent on anything and the earnings from that would only go to the scholarship fund in perpetuity, that I think is what you're after. Something, something that never is spent on anything else, ever. Correct?
No, that's not correct. No, I understand that the, the Hamilton funds are at, at the end of the cycle and that there will be no more Hamilton funds once their expenditure expended. That is, you know, I believe is what the council in 2003 was, was, was looking at, Jim. But that's not my point tonight. My point tonight is that I would like to see the interest from the Hamilton money go into a scholarship fund or into projects and realizing that this year or next year, there, there may be no more. And that then this, the city will have to fund that fund from their coffers or not. And it would be my preference, even though I, I certainly see what, what Mr. Weber was saying, to be my preference to leave that 18,000 dollars of city funds in there and increase it by the amount of the interest that came from the Hamilton funds. So that even if it wasn't used in one year, you would still have some carryover for future years.
And, and what would, if I may-
And what would you do with the interest then? If you increase the 18 up to 24, which is what the current interest is, what would you do with the interest off the Hamilton fund?
I would continue to put it into a scholarship fund.
No, no. Maybe I, I think I got lost. The, you said to increase the city's 18,000 contribution up to 24. No, you didn't.
No, I would leave the city's 18,000 contribution at 18,000.
Okay.
And supplement it with Hamilton interest money.
Okay. 6,000 from Hamilton.
No.
Take it up to-
This is whatever, whatever the interest is.
Whatever it is.
The interest is 24,000 a year right now. It will reduce.
Okay. So for this year, I would like to see the city's 18,000 remain and add to the scholarship fund, the 24,000 from the Hamilton fund.
We don't need it, Marshall. We don't have that demand.
But like I said, that, we don't have that demand every, this year. But if you keep the money in the fund as carryover when you do need it, is what I'm saying.
Mr. Mayor.
We just don't have that kind of need.
I, I have a question and, and just because I think I live at the other end of the financial spectrum for most of you. I still see a big gap with, um, how are we gonna pay for operations and maintenance then? I mean, we really are creating, yes, I agree philosophically and I like babies as much as you do. But we have a, we have a chunk of money that's not going towards operations and maintenance. Then what do we do? Where does that come from then?
Well, it comes from-
Can we take it out of Dwight's budget?
Well, it, it would-
It's gotta come from somewhere.
I mean, I realize that you're in the middle of your, your budget presentations right now. It would have to come from the general fund from property taxes. Or other Parks and Rec facility funds that go into the Parks and Rec budget. So it, it could be supl- that loss would then have to come from the general fund, from property taxes.
Well, that's another discussion for this council.
I think Gary, Gary might have had his end.
Marshall, go ahead and sit down if you'd like. One of the things, uh, I wanted to point out, I wanted to reiterate with, with, just a point that Dwight brought up on all these playgrounds. We got Calvin Macy and John hit on it earlier, that certified to put these things together, these playground equipments together. Saves us 15 grand every time we do it, at least. That's what you said. Not, and I like a more definite amount as we get going on this, so it can be reported back to council. But that's one good thing that we're seeing. I mean, that kind of playground savings is a big deal too, especially when we can buy these playgrounds cheaper. At the end of the year, when we can buy these things for anywhere from 50 to 70% off, uh, plus using one of our own guys that can do this is a big deal for us. I mean, that, I look at that as a money thing as well. And clearly surpasses this 24,000 dollars of interest that we're talking about here for. Somebody else, was it you weren't to him?
It might have been. Jim already got most of my points. He poached them right off me.
Sorry.
But, uh, when it comes down to it, the city's already supporting to a greater extent the operations budget for the HERC and other operations as is, as the interest due to the financial climate in the fund decreases and as the fund is expended, the amount of money for the 2003 resolution decreases and so more and more of the city funds are actually going to support the HERC. Eventually, the city's gonna support all of that. So in a couple of years, it's going to go away. And as was pointed out by John, which pocket is the money coming out of? You know, this pocket, that pocket. And I still think that using the funds as they are to put in the parks is gonna do the children of Moscow a whole lot more good. And if we can offset a little bit the money for the operation of the HERC, which is also benefiting the youth of Moscow, then that would be the wisest expenditure of the money from my rather muddied view of the financial situation here.
Well, for us also, uh, for this council to remember right now, for this fiscal year that we're in right now, uh, the, we're spending about 181,000 bucks in that operation maintenance that is coming out of the general fund. So keep that in mind. Next year, it won't be as much because there's less things, but it's still gonna be, what, 150,000, Gary?
Roughly.
So there's a chunk of dough coming out of the general fund to, for the maintenance of the operation there, way more than we're getting out of the interest that's coming off of this thing. So, yeah. Dwight?
Just a small point. It sounds like we're talking just a couple of years and this fund will be gone. This could be a decade, this could be 15, 20 years, I don't know. We can't put in all those playgrounds in one year. This is a very small crew and it's going to require us shutting down basically our whole operation for at least a week each time one of these happens. And they've got the rest of their jobs to still do. So, this is kind of an experiment upfront, but we're still talking years down the road before this money would be expended. I mean, right off, just the undeveloped parks that we had on our list is, you know, three to four years just by itself, so...
Mr. Mayor?
John?
I'm reading the action and talks about future purchases of playground equipment, installation, and preliminary path access to these playgrounds for the city park properties. What, I realize that before any money can be expended or spent, it has to go through the city council before we okay it. However, what we don't have in here, we've really tightened it down to the point if somebody comes up with another idea to use some of this for the city, do we have to? Have we put ourselves in a position where it has to go to the parks and playground equipment only? Or can we...
Let me answer that question.
Can we go, if somebody comes up and shows up and says, you know, we need another ice rink or whatever? Can we change this or are we, are we kind of tied into it?
Well, the resolution is an official statement of council policy, just like the resolution 2003-06 where it said the Hamilton Funds will be maintained to construct, operate, repair the HERC. Over the years, council's made some concessions on that, but has stayed true to that. Now, the proposal came forward to use this for playgrounds for kids. And so, rather than just have the council be advised of resolution 2003-06, and this is an exception, such as the ice rink commitment was an exception, the Joseph Street, excuse me, Moscow School District Community Playfields was another exception, that the council recognized that resolution and then said, yes, but we want to do this. This, in this case, the idea was, let's quit accepting out of that. The council can give us a current statement of what they want to use the funds for. And the council can change that later, but the idea was to get some certainty. Again, we went through the strategic planning process. The council said during that process, we need to find a way to develop parks. So, Parks came up with a fairly innovative way of developing them in-house, but the most expensive thing at the beginning of the park process is the playground. If you can get a playground and a path to it, these guys can put grass in, do the other things, and you have a park. Maybe it's not a park with a splash pad or an amphitheater, but you have a park. So, that's why the request came forward to say, there's only $1.9 million left that hasn't been committed to the ice rink or hasn't been spent on something else. We can do something with these parks for kids directly. I don't get on swings very often myself anymore. Chances are, they're going to be used for kids. So, the idea was, this is a way to address that MCA, meet with Mr. Hamilton's intent to help, the will says, as much as possible for the benefit of young children, the type who use playgrounds. But the idea was to give Parks and Rec some certainty that, yes, we want the rest of the Hamilton Funds to go toward that project. Does that mean that you can't change it? John, yes, you can.
Okay.
Council can change it anytime they want. They just pass another resolution.
That's, yeah, that was essentially my question. Thank you.
If I may, though? If I could ask the council that, one of the reasons that this request was brought forward, and whether you say the interest stays in the fund or not, was that it seems that every year, you're getting another request to piecemeal out the Hamilton Funds. And so, the idea was, can you give us some guidance so we can start doing some long-range planning? So, I hope by the resolution, the council sends the message that we've done the HERC, indoor rec facility, we've done the outside playfields, we've done assistance with the ice rink, now we're going to do it for kids' playgrounds in parks. That's really why you want a resolution to give notice to the public what you...
And one of the points are, we've got all this park land, we never do anything with it. Like that Lola Clyde Park, Christ, we've had that for 20-some years and gone nowhere with it. Walter?
A question for Gary, if I may? I think the mayor said that the current budget for O&amp;M on the HERC is about $181,000?
FY2017 is $181,000.
But it's going to drop to $150,000.
Yeah. If there is a big maintenance project like LED lights, things like that, then your budget goes up for that year.
So, it's going to drop $30,000?
Roughly.
Well, we haven't got that ironed out yet, Walter.
But it's somewhere in that realm.
But in that realm, which is in the realm of the $24,000 interest.
What's your point?
Yes. My point is, if the interest does not go toward the HERC O&amp;M, the amount of general fund we're going to be putting into the HERC O&amp;M is going to be about the same as it was in '17.
Yeah, but the previous year was a lot less.
Well, it was 16. Do you remember?
Uh, somewhere around...
You can go right back in there.
140, 141. Again, by memory, it was less than 150.
That's all.
Well, what does the council want to do? Here you have it.
I was going to move to approve the resolution committing the remaining Hamilton bequests for future purchases of playground equipment slash installation and the preliminary pathway access to those playgrounds for city park properties and directing the use of the interest generated by such remaining funds to go for, did we say M&amp;O or for scholarship?
We said we had it as M&amp;O.
So, we're going to keep it as M&amp;O? As M&amp;O? Okay.
I will second that.
If I may ask for clarification? So, was your motion to approve the resolution as presented in the packet?
Yes.
Laura, you have that? Does everybody understand the motion? Catherine, I made and...
I was just making sure.
And Gina's seconded. I'll start the rule with Walter.
No.
Aye.
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 I'll go with it. Aye.
Okay.
I don't like it, but I'll go with it.
Okay, the resolution passes. Finally, one. Thank you, Dwight. Thank you for your testimony, Marshall. Good to see you. Come back sooner. It's been a while since you... (laughing). Yes. Okay, we will go on. That ends the agenda, so we will move on to reports. I'll start with you, Jim.
Okay, well, let's see. In the last week, I've had a Arts Commission meeting and art walks the big thing on the plate right now for June 16th. And they've got the cover poster art has been decided upon and is going to be a big deal as usual. Downtown Moscow will rock and roll pretty hard on June 16th, so I encourage everybody to show up for that. Farmers Market Commission met the very next day on Wednesday and they're working very hard on coming up with a tiered fee structure that's fair and equitable and encourages young entrepreneurs and without penalizing people who don't make a lot of money at the market. And so, there's a lot to work on there. Went to the Palouse Knowledge Corridor meeting on Thursday and the big thing going on there is the Entrepreneur Boot Camp, which is next week. And anybody's welcome to go and view that. And it's on the new PKC website, has all the information that you'd ever want to know about that. And so, I encourage everybody to, you know, pay attention to what goes on there and hopefully we'll get some new businesses to set up shop on the Palouse because of that. And that's all I have, sir.
Art, I've not had any meetings. They're all coming up this week.
Okay, Walter?
On Wednesday, the 10th of May, the Planning and Zoning Commission met. Three items on that of a little bit of note. One was a initial review of Chapter Four of the Comprehensive Plan, which is Parks and Recreation. They're working their way through all the chapters of the Comp Plan. The other item, another item was the use table ordinance, which Mike referred to tonight when we got into the discussion of whether or not there's some mathematical challenges in sizes of buildings and sizes of parking spaces and all that. So, that work continues in the use table ordinance at the P&amp;Z. And then, there was a introduction to the subdivision code. Apparently, community development is going to rewrite everything they have any jurisdiction over in this town and going to do it one chapter at a time through P&amp;Z. And we can all look forward to seeing it when they get it done.
Okay, Catherine?
Jim and I did the proclamation at the Ren Fair, which was just really fun. And then, been to both farmers markets and been looking for the commissions as they've been presenting, which has been really cool. I've really enjoyed that. And then, I was with the fire department and we took care of all the issues, it seems, there. But I've enjoyed being able to be, getting to know the volunteer fire department and the EMS.
Gina?
Pathways Commission, we saw at our last council meeting, and they are gearing up for some new signs and new displays to use at the farmer's market. They're pretty excited about that. The Sustainable Environment Commission meets tomorrow evening and the P-back group meets Thursday afternoon. So, I'll have more to tell you next time.
Okay, John?
Since I've been off my feed here lately, I've missed a couple of meetings, unfortunately, and I have really nothing to report.
Okay. I got a couple of things. May the 2nd, we had an AIC district two board meeting here in Moscow Association Idaho Cities. We really elected a new, another board member, which was Bob Blakey, the same as the previous. He got reelected. May the 3rd, we had our monthly meeting at Wallace Complex with county commissioners and others, University of Idaho officials as well. May the 6th, we had the kickoff of the farmer's market and the bathroom dedication. And last week, we had all kinds of different U of I events that I went to. I'm not going to mention every single one of them, but it was last week, school, all kinds of graduations, fun things, the town was hopping. Now, we have kind of a quiet summer in front of us, folks, until next fall, or the end of this summer, I should say. Gary, do you have anything for us?
Just a public apology. I, when we dedicated, when you dedicated the restrooms on the opening day of farmer's market, it was mentioned earlier tonight about the donors who donated $10,000 to that project. Due to just an oversight on my part, I neglected to invite them to the opening and I just wanted to publicly thank them and apologize for not doing that. But other than that, things are going on.
And we certainly appreciate that. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, move.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're done at 9:22. Folks, thank you very much.